I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Yes.
There's someone making a public comment.
Well, it's just part of the report for the Cape Light Compact. We've been asked to report on any trips that we take. And I've recently taken three, actually, so.
Could you tell us your name, please, just for the record?
Sure, Margaret Song with Cape Light Compact.
Okay. And where have you been, Margaret?
Well, actually, at the beginning of September, I was in Chicago for a CFL summit. The Department of Energy actually asked meeting stakeholders across the U.S. to come in. They selected about 10 folks they wanted to talk to about lighting in general and the future of it. And it actually ended up as an editorial in the New York Times. But that was something that we were invited to attend. And that was just one day, so flying in and flying out two days, which is an intense trip. And then the next trip that I took was actually sponsored by the Department of Energy and the Environmental Protection Agency for Energy Star appliances and consumer electronics. It did focus on conversations with manufacturers, retailers of Energy Star-qualified appliances, water heaters, and consumer electronics, since those are things that we're trying to address in our program.
Excuse me, wasn't that the one that was referenced in the New York Times?
That was the CFL summit that happened. There was also another reference, actually, to the appliance partner meeting and talking about some of what's going on with increasing use in consumer electronics and appliances, how to help curb that.
And is there one more?
There was one more. The last one, I was actually asked to speak twice at a conference for other programs such as ourselves, part of the Consortium for Energy Efficiency. And I was asked to speak on a pilot that we're doing that's one of the first in the nation to look at comprehensive lighting packages for residential customers and new construction. Instead of taking a socket and changing it out, this is looking at the whole design and looking at lighting and the way you live. And sort of looking at that, and other folks are very interested in Canada as well as other parts of the U.S. and sort of following that, so I was there to help introduce that. And the other thing was working with consumer electronics dealers like Best Buy, Comcast, others, and teaching them how to work with programs such as ours. What are the things that we're looking at? And how do we determine what those incentives amounts are? And how we're sort of governed as far as programs go for energy efficiency?
And how do you work with developers on the program or home developers?
Sure, if you're talking about our comprehensive lighting program, what we do is we've actually, it's a pilot, so we've reached out to those folks that are involved in our Energy Star Homes program, so those that want to build at an efficient level. We found, though, that most developers and builders, this is not their bailiwick. Usually, they hand it off to an electrician, or it's the last thing the consumer's doing. By that time, they've spent their allocations, or it's more difficult. So what we do is we're actually paying lighting designers to come in, ask the homeowner, developer, builder, electrician, et cetera, how they think that this home will be used. And then from there, we're paying the incremental cost, so there's no additional cost to the customer, or the builder, or the developer. And we're trying this out to see what reductions we can make. So it's new types of lighting, it's also controls, because that's not something that we usually do, dimming, daylighting, controls in homes, so that it's sort of a smarter home.
Have you reached out to architects?
We have, we have. And for the few projects that we're working on, it really is involving the entire build-design team, because if one person doesn't like it, it's not going to happen. And it can also alter how the home looks for both the architect, builder, et cetera. So we want to make sure that everyone is involved in the process.
That's exciting, it sounds great. How about if homeowners just simply wanted to do that, re-convert some of the state or convert to a different type of lighting?
We don't, right now, most people don't rip out their ceilings to take out the recess cans or to rebuild it. Most of the time, it's changing out the fixture, which we can obviously help with at this time. Right now, we're focusing on new construction, because it's easier to put all that in. The next phase is major renovations, so if you're renovating a kitchen, if you're renovating a space, it's also easier there. And then after that, we're going to launch some automation tools and some smart controls for people who just want to put that in their homes. They might have really good fixtures that we might be able to convert and put some controls on, so that if it turns light and you know your kid has the light on all the time, it'll automatically phase that off if there's enough light in the room.
That's true. Okay. Go right ahead.
The Oshrim Company up in Lynn, General Electric, I used to have programs that would, you could import and use to help design some of these programs. So if you have a chance, you ought to look online to see when they're still available.
Yeah, and they, we actually are working with Silvania, Lutron, GE, most of the major players like Cooper Lighting, Kitchler Lighting. They're all very interested in this, because it's a new market for them to look at more residential applications.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for coming by.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, thank you. Okay. We have a full agenda today, so we must move on. Thank you. We're here to review.
Here to talk about performance objectives.
Yes, performance objectives, yes, thank you. I need my glasses on, review.
I think this is pretty straightforward. These are suggested performance objectives for FY 2010 coming up, and this has been part of a process that we've been going through for the last few months. So I think we wanted to run through.
I'm going to crank the screen just a little bit, if I can.
What I'd like to do is just sort of show you a little bit of the work.
Is it still on that? I'm sorry, I screwed up your projector, then. Let's see that a little better.
Killed her.
How about you? And can you see?
Oh, I'm fine. It's a little crooked.
Well, yeah, this background idea is going to show exactly what we went through to get to the paper. And FY 2010, it all started with the job description, which I think is a great place to start. So we looked at essential functions and we picked out the keywords, you know, that relate to the essential functions in the job description. And then we categorized basically into three big categories. One is communication, education, and public relations. The second is organizational capacity and the delivery of services. And three, the third is really mission-driven activities. And so we color-coded them and we sort of provided them to job descriptions to pick out those areas. The executive committee was involved in the development of these. This is the front page of what you have in front of you right now. So really, we used the OGSM strategy, which is to come up with an objective and then establish a goal, strategies for achieving that goal, and then measures for that strategy to be used on an annual basis.
Excuse me, what did you say?
OGSM. OGSM strategy is what they use.
What does that mean?
Objective.
This means objective goals, strategy, measurement. So those are the four categories that we're going to use. And basically, the goals are things that we'd like to achieve within three years or more. And then the strategies and the measures are things that we can look for to achieve within a year or two. So in the communications, education, and public relations piece, the goal is to continue to build strong relationships with the community, regular appearances in front of town administrators, boards, selectmen, planning boards, to secure training for staff on communications and public relations. We did some customer service training last year, we'll do more of that. To oversee the update of the Cape Cod Commission website based on public input. We have begun the process of looking at that at a meeting with John Morse yesterday. Oversesee the development of a style guide to unify the identity of Cape Cod Commission work products and communications. They are a little bit diverse now, and I think probably emblematic of the siloed approach that I encountered when I first came there. To oversee the planning-execution of the Cape Cod Commission's 20th anniversary meeting, which is an open-public meeting in the spring, and to oversee development and distribution of an annual survey to the towns. And some of the proposed measures would be 100% retention rate, obviously, of the 15 towns. We dealt with Yarmouth, a couple of efforts from Yarmouth to withdraw the last couple of years. 10% increase in traffic to the new website that we would set up. You know, Boston Globe coverage of the anniversary. You know, whether we're making efforts inroads with Cape Business Magazine. And based on the survey, whether there would be an 80% satisfaction rate in the annual town survey that might demonstrate that towns are becoming where we're going to work with the Cape Cod Commission. So examples of how this single goal, several strategies, and how we might measure some of those strategies. On the organizational capacity and delivery of services, the overall goal is to increase the capacity of the organization to effectively deliver planning, technical, and regulatory services. So the strategy ought to work with directors, committee members, and staff to create an organizational plan using this method, the OGSM method, to create a model to create stronger alignment of internal activities and resources with the agency's missions. And this is actually beginning tomorrow, this internal alignment. We're going to have our annual staff retreat tomorrow, and it is really geared towards this internal alignment, making sure, revisiting the commission, that everything we do is important to our core mission and that we haven't picked up ancillary duties that might be great to do over the years. Maybe they were grant-funded, but the grant funding's gone away. And to make sure that everything is aligned with the core mission and that we're not doing things that are unnecessary or superfluous or doing things that are nice when we could be doing something else that was more keyed into what our core mission is. Also, to refat step, reformat staff meetings, which have become, I didn't recognize the existing format when I got there as being all that useful. And so we have re-formatted the staff, and the staff meetings are going to follow. We have a plan to do that, that we will announce the staff retreat tomorrow. Evaluate work assignments and reassign anything necessary to match skills with project needs. Observe staff assignments to ensure projects are completed in a timely manner to the satisfaction of towns, developers, or other clients that the commission may have. To continue to monitor building renovations and ensure the plans provide the most efficient layout for operations, which is an ongoing effort with our new landlord. Secure technological resources necessary to efficiently carry out the Cape Cod Commission activities, and we've made some inroads there. And to secure the necessary political, human, financial resources necessary to support the Cape Cod Commission activities and to foster a professional culture that includes effective communication, accountability, and creativity. So some of the measures there would be the development of a five-year strategic plan, building renovations completed on time, 20% increase in requests for services from the towns, and the StatsCapeCod is our new database website, economic development website, that we need to get operational this year.
Question?
Yes.
You refer to the towns as clients. Has that always been the case?
No.
I didn't think so. But I think it's discussed. Really important to say that. It conveys a meaning altogether, different.
Right, and we are, as in the customer service business, and towns clearly are towns, but they are also clients. But then we have other clients, too, that are not towns and not... So we are, we're trying to reformat the language we use, too. I mean, we don't refer to developers, we refer to applicants, we mean clients, and, you know. And that has a very meaningful effect. So organizational capacity, also to reduce structural deficits. I mean, this is an important one at the commission. The commission established 20 years ago with a 2.5% increase annually, but unlike towns, that doesn't vary based on new growth. So that's 2.5% on a fixed number. Clearly, healthcare costs benefits have increased far in excess of 2.5%, which is leaving the commission facing a structural deficit. Right now, the Cape Cod Environmental Protection Fund brings in about 2.6 annually to what is in over $4 million operating budget now. So we have to supplement that with grants and other non-property tax-based revenue. And I think we've been pretty good at that, but we have to find a way to really fill in that structural deficit. To ensure the agency has adequate financial services and that funded from the Environmental Protection Fund is equal to or less than the sum of other non-county sources and that no funding is received from county sources. That was, when I got here, the Cape Cod Commission had for some time relied on $100,000 to $150,000 of funds from the county's general revenue. And I didn't, although we did have to ask for $100,000 the first year that I was here, because the budget was already in place, that's something I felt strongly about then, that we didn't need to do and we shouldn't be doing. And, you know, we have taken steps to submit a budget last year that didn't ask for any, and I expect that any time in the future, we're going to come forward and ask for general funds to be used to support the administrative cost of the Cape Cod Commission. In the past, it had been a practice, because the commission is the only county department that rents. And it was seen as a rental offset, but I think it's unnecessary. It's not something that we should be asking to do for us, it's something we should be able to do on our own. So the strategies would be to review the budget activities, determine which ones will expand or change, increase revenue from grants and direct services to towns, seek new opportunities for state and federal support, such as achieving a designation as an Economic Development District, which is something that we discussed with the federal EDA as part of the SETS process when they were here over the summer. And that would bring, SERPED, for example, is an Economic Development District. And that generates $60,000 from the feds to SERPED on an annual basis. It's probably a two-to-three-year process to establish that district. If we were to establish that district and there were funds that were coming to support that, we could, in our new arrangement with the EDC, return that money to the EDC, have more money available for grants, so that that EDC grant over three years is really seed money to build capacity, to help us hopefully support that capacity and have that license plate money available for grants back to the towns.
And a comment?
Yes.
Since the commission did use county funds in the past, say, last year $100,000, and now you don't. I think that's all the more reason that we should ask the Assembly to support our regionalization efforts and use that equivalent $100,000 to $150,000 for regionalization.
Yeah, and part of this is, I mean, our mission has expanded in our collaboration with other county entities, including Water Protection Collaborative and the EDC have expanded. But if you look at the EDC, the EDC also had come in the past to the county for $150,000 in administrative expenses. So not only is $150,000 from the Cape Cod Commission, not on the general tax levy anymore, no longer is the EDC's admin overhead on the tax. So that's a $300,000 annual savings to the county by coordinating those funding streams the way that they've been coordinated now. And I don't think that that gets a lot of press, or a lot of credit, or a lot of recognition. And so I think it's important that the Assembly understands that that's where we are. And I think that's, and that's really credit to the commissioners for seeing that the budgets are tight, we can do more with less if we collaborate more. So I think that's an important issue. So collaborate with other businesses and organizations to leverage existing resources and expand services and develop our reset business model, generate revenue through responses to towns, RFPs, requests for services, existing services. The commission, as it is currently composed, can provide excellent professional resources to the towns. And where towns in the past have had to go out to RFP for consulting services on some issues, I think the commission is in a position now to offer equal to or better services at half the cost. Understanding that a lot of the services the commission provides to towns are free and should be free, because we are funded the way that we're funded. But where we can save towns money by not having to hire outside consultants, it may be appropriate to charge a reasonable fee to be reimbursed for that. An example is, we just helped Harwich complete their open space plan, and commission staff put in over 200 hours into that. And we went into that, offering that assistance upfront, and the Harwich Town Manager has requested us to sort of build them, you know, get a reasonable amount for the assistance that we're getting. So we're seeing more of that cooperation from towns, where they know that they can get less from us. And the reality is, they hire outside consultants to come in. Those consultants, their first phone call generally is the Cape Cod Commission, to get the information that they will reformat and then charge the town for. And, you know, sometimes that works and sometimes that doesn't.
And, excuse me, and that usually costs them more money if they go to an independent consultant and they're basically...
So to provide a higher level of resource internally, and that may generate non-regulatory funds for the commission to support operations.
I think Bill has a question.
Yes.
Yeah, since there's been, you know, an integration of the EDC and the Cape Cod Commission, how, what consideration are you giving for the role of, you know, the county EDC now that it's essentially made a commitment to support the Cape Cod Commission? How do you see your relationship as far as how we, what kind of a metric will we use?
Well, we're looking to, we, this is an incremental process, so we're here to talk to you. All of this is really in draft form. We have talked to the executive committee. You'll see later that some of the goals that we worked out with county administration last year are also reflected up here. And so we're trying to come up with this process, Bill, but we will be working with the EDC to figure out how they, I mean, the way that we envision this happening is we sort of are the, have become the staff for the EDC in a lot of ways. And they are the sort of overarching brainpower. And really, the commission in an, did not have that sort of proactive economic development expertise from an advisory board in the past. And I think that's the role that I see for the EDC going forward. But clearly, you know, the reset business model and some of the other economic development work that we're going to do is going to be measured, and we would expect that the EDC would weigh in on those measures.
I think it would be useful just to think about what focus and what areas of expertise we need from an advisory board on the EDC going forward in respect to, with the exception of two members that I can think of that had a focus on economic issues, that looked at macro rather than, you know, the microapplications. It might be useful to find out how we can change that focus so it would be more useful to fit in with your strategic plan. Because I wouldn't want their advice to be narrowly focused on things that have been traditional, you know, areas of economic interest.
I agree, and we had a little bit of this conversation yesterday. And I think the direction that we're headed in is broader, more regional economic development impacts. I think it's appropriate for the commissioners to weigh in with the EDC, to sort of nudge them in that direction. What I like about the EDC board, the way it's constructed, is these are not town representatives or municipal representatives, they are individuals with experience that have been chosen to represent. And it's easier for a group constructed that way to have a truly regional output and not one that is more parochial, defensive of the existing town position. So I think we can get there, but I think it's an important shift in focus that needs to be discussed at the EDC, and I think it's very appropriate for the commissioners to weigh in on that.
Yeah, I personally would look forward to your, you know, your advice, you know, as to what kind of resources you'd need in order to be successful in that area.
Yeah, I think we are moving, and I don't want to get too much off track, but I think the EDC already, you know, we are talking about some very big grants. I mean, Open Cape is out there for $30 million, BioFields is out there for $19 million. And then we've got other international corporations that I think will be discussing more in the coming months, that now want to look at the Conference of Economic Development Strategy for the region as a way that they might sort of take some of what they do and bring it into the region and blow it up. I think that that's very exciting. So from the commission's perspective, I know it's an area that we've never been before. I think it isn't the kind of area that the EDC hasn't been. These aren't small grants to local organizations, these are really macro-regional issues. And so I think already that partnership has paid dividends, and so I'm hopeful that that will continue. So there are the measures there. Now, in the mission-driven activities, you know, the goal really is to increase the regional planning efforts. And, you know, there's that shift from the commission being a regulatory agency that does anecdotal plan by request, to a planning agency that implements that plan for a regulatory plan. And so we want to increase those regional planning efforts. So the strategy would be to establish Regionalization Support Center in conjunction with the county commissioners. That is Office for Regional Coordination, kind of activities. As we've discussed in the past, how we might be able to roll up some money to support those. Examine opportunities for collaboration with Plymouth, Martha's Vineyard, Manitucket. We have coordinated greatly with the islands over the issue of what we're going to do with offshore energy generation wind on the Green Communities Act, the Ocean Management Plan, and the wind sitting reform legislation that's floating around. We've had some discussions with Plymouth. The chair and I and Kevin Galligan went up to Halifax to discuss some issues with some folks up there. But more importantly, we've actually approached and worked with Plymouth on solid waste now. So we have several southeastern Massachusetts communities that are working with us on really important unified approaches to solid waste, municipal solid waste streams.
When you talk to Senator Eldridge, I hope you bring up the possibility of how we could participate in some of the state regionalization efforts, especially to tap into what I would call some of the, you know, the grants that they're generating with the county helping us move our process forward.
Well, I agree, and, you know, regionalization on a state level is probably another discussion that we have. Because I think this administration's interpretation of some of these regional acts is incongruent at times and certainly hasn't been in our best interest. I don't think they're really regional at all. So we might want to talk about how we format that response to the administration.
One other point, when you talk about the regional plan, Plymouth Rock Studios is another, because I've had three people contact me in the last couple of weeks for filming opportunities from London. They come from London, they come from elsewhere in the country. And they're coming, and they're doing, and they're coming here now. I'm sure it's the result of Plymouth Rock Studios. So I think there's something that is out there that we should probably get our arms around.
Yeah, Elizabeth has been in a couple of meetings.
The general business book, go ahead.
With Plymouth Rock Studios and trying to sort of figure on what they're doing. There's been some change in leadership up there, but, you know, we are keyed in on that. Sandwich has actually been up front on talking to them about some ancillary facilities that they may need to locate on the Cape. And we have been working and talking to the local chambers and the chamber about some of those other opportunities there, so that is an important piece.
We have to come back to that at the end of this, because there's some other things that I'd want to talk to all of you about that I want to...
Okay. So to collaborate with entities who share regional planning objectives, like the Cape Light Compact and Cape Invented Electric Cooperative, who we're very close with, and I think the combination of the commission, the CLC and CEVAC, demonstrate the robust nature of county government, especially when compared to some of the council governments that exist in other places. And very useful tools, and they should put us at the top of the list for some of these larger grants that we're competing for, because we have capacity that other areas simply don't have. And I think with those organizations, put us ahead of the curve on a lot of these issues. And so to direct staff to facilitate meetings and manage projects of a regional benefit and to advocate for regulatory authority over ocean-based wind facilities in the Ocean Management Plan, we're in the process of doing that. The measures here are a new DLTA website, that's Direct Local Technical Assistance. That's money that we get, the commission gets through DHCD every year. Last year was the first year we presented for regional projects, and we did. That's some of the money I think we might be able to match with an Office for Regional Coordination, so we take $150 there, $150 here. I think we could roll up a fairly robust program. SETS Annual Update to be complete by June 2010, so we're using that. It is a real, living document, we have 16 priority projects now. We're having an implementation meeting on the 27th, and so we will be following that up through the year. And I think the success of that program to date has attracted the attention of some communities and other people that maybe didn't participate last year that will want to participate in the annual update. The Regional Wastewater Management Plan will be complete this year. I can't overstate how important that plan is, especially given some of the backlash in some of these communities that are starting to have capital discussions about wastewater. A regional agreement for municipal solid waste executed this year. We've had, we've been very, had some very productive meetings there. Patty Daly and Elizabeth have really been leading the charge on that. Very good example of regional efforts. And then hopefully, we'll get Chapter H adopted by the Assembly this year, which I think is probably the most meaningful economic development ordinance the county has done in a decade, so.
It's a county, of course.
County. And so the second goal would be to increase direct planning and technical services to towns to develop our reset business model to work in these economic centers directly, which we are doing in Born in Yarmouth, Dennisport, and Sandwich, to improve the capacity, to support organizational structure planning, regulatory technical services, and to increase the promotion of services through our newsletter, annual report, and meetings with the towns. So if we looked at FY 2009, we've got some major accomplishments. We really looked at the objectives of the 21st Century Task Force. That has been sort of a guiding document for my first two years. That has been sort of a guiding document for my first two years as Executive Director. The County Administrator objectives last year and some of the objectives that the Executive Committee looked at. This is how we developed the product that's in front of me now, the FY 2009. Some of the major accomplishments with Yarmouth, we had two votes within one year. We had four regional planning and capital investment initiatives, the RPP, which is new, updated and up for an award this year. The SED's project, the stimulus package reacted to that with 14 projects that were approved by the MPO, and a solid waste advisory committee, major initiatives. And especially with the RPP and the SEDs, as proud as I am of the substance in those documents, I am as proud of the process, the public process we went through to develop those. Definitely not a top-down process. Significant staff and organizational restructuring, and then the ongoing Cape Wind efforts, which are now relocated. So, these are the 21st Century Task Force recommendations. This is the matrix, which has planning recommendations, regulatory recommendations, management communications recommendations, and the status of each as of June 2009. This really was sort of a guiding document for us. These are the four objectives that Mark and I had for last year, which is to continue the efforts to build strong relationships with towns and Cape organizations, working with the Water Protection Collaborative to develop a regional wastewater management plan, improving the Commission's mapping activities, especially with respect to land use, wind resources and FAA regulations on the wind side, and to develop the 2010 Cape Cod Commission budget, taking into consideration potential resource constraints from the county. So, you can see where those were very general and good objectives, but I think in this new structure with these specific measures, a little bit easier to follow and translate into.
Specific strategies and new measures against it.
And then, there were 14 objectives that the Executive Committee really came up with. So, what we did is we took all of these, the four objectives, and the areas that are highlighted here are those areas that relate directly to those.
Excuse me, would you leave the room?
So, the areas that are highlighted here are those that refer back to those job description highlights. So, that's what we want to make sure, that the job description is consistent with my, the goals for me, not the goals for the organization, but.
The goals that I would be in charge of.
And then, again, the same sort of highlighting of those major sections in the Executive Committee reports, and then these common themes that we developed from there, using the highlighting, again, in these three areas. And so, we can see how these areas refer back to those objectives. There are a number of slides here that I go through, but this is what, this is the process that we went through. We went through all of the objectives, the job description, all of the objectives, highlighting in those objectives, the areas that relate back to the job description, and then relating them back to each one of these areas that we looked at. So, this is organizational capacity, basically to do more with less in the delivery of services, the budget. Looking at the previous county subsidy, the elimination of that county subsidy and the increased grants in order to get to that fiscal stability piece that we looked at. DLTA funds, how we use those. The reorganization, you know, and these are all examples of things that we did, all the , these are new staff members that were brought on, part of the reorganization.
Are you going to give us this PowerPoint presentation?
I would be happy to give that, this PowerPoint. This is the reset team, all that, and this is all the background work. I could have showed this up front and then produced this document, but I just, the digitization process that we're going through. So, this is all that we went through, our increased ability to do transportation modeling, more Executive Committee issues, photo simulation services that we can offer to towns on the consulting side to generate money, space issues, and then mission-driven activities, regional policy plan, land use vision maps. And I like this slide. This is, these are our Cape Cod Commission regulations, and we have revisited almost every one of these letters in the last two years and trying to reformat the way that we do business. So, we have Chapter A, which is our enabling regulations, Chapter B, which is the regional policy plan, C is the RPP review process, D are the development agreements, E are the regs or the DCPCs, F impact fees, G for growth incentive zones, and H, hopefully, the ability to raise lower thresholds. So, if we look and highlight the different areas, A, B, D and H, we can see where we've looked at economic centers and land use vision maps, industrial service and trade areas, village centers, and the increasing and decreasing of thresholds under Chapter H. And then, under Chapter A, we've got 33 DRI applications, 16 DRI modifications and no appeals. In the past, we've had a lot of appeals, and that eats up litigation funds, so I think that's a measure of success. The regional policy plans, we have seven out of 15 towns, and that's going, that number's going to be going up by two soon, that have endorsed land use vision maps. 10 of 15 towns have certified LCPs in FY 09, and 12 of those 15 towns have certified LCPs in FY 10. The review process, we have a housing review that's underway now. The development agreements, we have three projects that have filed intentions to go forward with development agreements, the Red Jacket Blue Water Hotels, the Villages, the Sandwich Golden Triangle, and I believe we have a new one from Ashby Combs under Expansion. The DCPCs, we have two new ones, Brewster and in Barnstable and Craigville. And then, on the GIs, we have three applications that are in, Phase Two GIs in Yarmouth. We have a Buzzards Bay growth incentive zone application that we're working on right now, and we have also one at Dennisport. Dennisport just finished their charrette, a five-day charrette last week that was wildly successful for my bit. Over 120 people there talked about Dennisport, it was really impressive. And then, hopefully, Chapter H. These are our reset slides, again, tying back to policies and regional policy plan and pathways, tied back to County Administrator objectives, and the mission-driven activities is our GIS department, which we've expanded significantly in the last two years, and human resources and investment in technical resources there, and really working with Open Cape as an important component of that Open Cape project to provide umbrella GIS services regionally, in a way that provide higher quality services to towns for pennies on the dollar for what they're paying now. DLE grants, transportation projects, which are numerous, and all of these tying back to these, the Executive Committee objectives. Ocean Advisory Committee, this is the ocean plan, is also a corresponding SED's project for coastal development. And that's it. I mean, I don't want to take up too much of your time. We could spend any, a number of hours going through the slides as we have done internally, but basically what you have in front of you is a summation of that, all of that work that went from the job description to the number of different objectives, which sort of points out the difficulty that we've had in the past with the Commission being sort of what it is, answering to the Cape Cod Commission on some substantive issues related to interpretation of the Act, answering to the County Commissioners in that structure. And so, different objectives from different people and sort of scooping them all together into this approach, and now with a new relationship with the Commissioners, hopefully being able to use this format going forward.
Is it possible that we could take this on the road some way? The first thing I think of, it takes about 30 minutes to go through it.
Right.
You know, maybe we could, if you had some time, either the 13th or the 20th, we could take it over to the C3TV, and we could do, you know, do the voiceover you wanted, and then, we could then get a copy of that and then, you know, let's say, send copies of it to each one of the towns. It's a very impressive presentation.
Thank you.
It's very well designed, and I think that, you know, that your, let's see, presentation as, you know, as a, like a voiceover is excellent. So, I think that it would, I think more people need to see it, and as popular as our, you know, as our TV program is, I think it would be worthwhile to have something we'd actually send to each one of the, each one of the communities directly.
This is a draft that you have now for your consideration, to sort of go through and see if there's something we've left out or some other point of emphasis we want to make. So, that's for your consideration. These are my personal objectives, so this is what we'll be talking about throughout the next year. In addition to that, though, a lot of these same principles are going to go into what is going to be the overall strategic plan for the Agency. And I think you're right. I think we can refine this presentation for the strategic plan for the Agency and go out there and show people exactly how we're going to do it, what the measures are, and I think it will be very informative. It's been a great internal process, it's been a very good process for me, been a process that I have to thank Elizabeth for, because she's really led that process and brought this, this OGSM approach to the way that we think about it, because it's so, you read the Act and it's, the responsibility is so broad and general and far-reaching, that to try to get your hands around a strategic plan that is condensed enough and effective enough and has real measures is, takes a lot of effort.
And we don't get one question, though, and that's, whenever I hear five years, you know, I get disturbed, because it sort of, to me, it always puts off at some time, way in the future.
Right.
And I notice that on here, you know, we have some specific objectives to accomplish within a shorter period of time. And I hope you give consideration when you have your staff retreat about the importance of every year showing some progress towards meeting the overall objective within the strategic planning process.
And these are my performance objectives. We will be closing very quickly on the Commission's overall objectives, and then every department will have their own internal. Once you get this OGSM method down, it can break down into a different infinite number of subgroups, so that they can actually be used to inform the personnel about evaluations of my social community management team with every member of my organization, so they'll all have their own sort of component of this. So, we have a strategic plan that actually is a work plan with measures that we can look at at the end of the year. So, very excited.
If I can ask Elizabeth, what was your process? How did you go through this with Paul and others? I mean, I saw some of it in the process, but I think it would just be interesting for the Commissioners to hear how you went about this and, oh, you've brought him to this place, Elizabeth. I know that we have to give you a lot of credit here.
Well, I will preface her comments by saying that I have not, in the past, been a big fan of strategic planning, because I have been involved with organizations that spent months contemplating their navel and trying to figure out who they were instead of doing any work. And I am much, I just, I want to get out there and do the work. So, with a healthy dose of skepticism and a prohibition against using any news for dogs, Elizabeth had to sort of take these principles and show me that we really could do this in an efficient way, a meaningful way, in a way that I didn't feel was wasting time. And she was very successful.
Thank you. So, tell us how, how you feel about this.
Thank you. So, it was a little bit of a different, non-traditional strategic planning process, and for a long time, I wasn't allowed to use the word strategic planning, so. But what we did, it was just, you know, really, I sat down with Paul, and it was a series of interviews with Paul and with the senior management staff, and reviewing the Act. Spent a lot of time, you know, taking a look at the Act, taking a look at those guiding documents, you know, always start with those, the job description, the objectives and the task force recommendations. And it was just a matter of spending some time with that and getting comfortable and really pulling out the essence of what those were all trying to say, and that's where those common themes came from. And I think once we had the common themes defined, it became easier to understand, okay, where we need to go in the future. You know, I think Paul has a very, very good handle on Cape Cod, and the needs 20 years ago may be a little bit different than the needs today, but the overall mission is still the same. And so, it was just a matter of that, working back and forth, and I thought it was a very successful approach to working. It was, like, we shared it with the Executive Committee.
It's a great document. So, you were able to take all of that discussion and sort of synthesize it into these, almost like boom, this did this in a sense, like into an idea, and then you played that off of everybody and said, is this, is this what you mean, right, everything we've just discussed?
Right.
And so, they come to that, and then you go to the next.
Correct. They're easily understood. I mean, you read them and you know exactly what they mean, so that when you look to the strategic part of it and to the measurement part of it, it all becomes very clear and it fits together. Really a good job.
In the past, I've been associated with some of these projects where you get measures, and a lot of them are quantifiable measures, and they're meaningless to the operation of the organization, but, and they're easy to hit for people that are just concerned with getting to the numbers. And here, I think we have a different process. So, I think the goals will not change. The strategies are our best suggestion, our best guess at how we're going to achieve those goals, and the measures are going to test whether the, those strategies are correct or not. So, when we go through the measures at the end of the year, we may fail some of those measures, but that's informative about the strategy that we use without any effect on the goal. So, it may call that, well, we didn't hit this, this is why, because we thought this strategy was going to work, it didn't work. So, there's a feedback loop on it that brings it from one year to the next year to the next year, and I really like that from a management perspective.
So, now we have to take Elizabeth to all of our, into us, so we can.
For a small fee.
Yeah, for a small fee, yeah, right, since we don't pay. It might be direct payment as opposed to the Commission.
If I could just add, you know, I just want to give credit to this tool. I was taught this tool years ago, and it's, it was brought over from Japan, and Procter and Gamble has used it. It's really been used in a lot of the big corporations, and one of the reasons it's so successful is exactly what you said, it's simple. The entire organization can put one page on their wall and very easily understand what the expectations are for them. So, if the county was interested in using this model, I don't know that I personally could handle that particular task, but I am able to provide you with resources as people that.
Is this Demeter?
That would be very, very good.
Is this Demeter?
The name?
The name, was it the, there was a Japanese model that was used several years ago that was based on an executive from Ford Company that went over to Japan and set up quality circles and that sort of.
Right. And Demeter doesn't sound familiar, but there's another name, and I'm not sure exactly who it is, and then there was an award created.
Yeah, yeah. Is that, is that the program?
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe so.
We have to be careful, because the number four of the pile ended almost with bankrupt when they were preparing to win that award.
We won't overreach. Are there any questions, any comments?
I would like to suggest that there's a lot of work that's going into this. And I've already commented on what I call the, let's see, the quality of the presentation. I'd like to suggest to my fellow Commissioners that we, you know, we take an opportunity to look at this and do what Paul suggested, which is to see.
And provide feedback.
I agree.
My first reaction is, you know, this is very positive and it's wonderful. Good for you.
Thank you.
I'll have a word with both.
Any comments from the public or questions?
It's impressive, and we are from the lead of the new voters.
Yes, I know.
As part of the observer corps and where you are about our county government. And this is very interesting for me. I saw you at Brewster meeting last week, and so.
I wonder if we could actually take it under advisement and at the same time, schedule the time when we want to come back with our comments, or.
What if we do that?
Particularly, otherwise, you know, it'll be lost.
Do you want to comment next week?
I think that's probably too soon.
Just one thing, I'd like to, although, you know, we're basically just responding to this particular document, I find that there's a lot of detail and useful stuff in there that, you know, so if you could give us.
So, we'll give you the entire presentation.
Give us a CD on that, and then we could, you know, we could look at, look at all of it, but, and have the benefit of sort of going over, because there's a lot of stuff that I think that all of us could use when we're going out in our business, because it speaks to the things that we're trying, we're trying to accomplish with the community.
You know, we touched on last week, talking about maybe doing a regional conference here on the Cape.
Yes.
And your 20th anniversary is next year.
Yes.
So, it's 2010.
Actually, it should be this year, or should it?
2009.
Depends on the measure from the passage of the Act or the FOD implementation.
When was it, when, was it 1990 that it was in? Okay, so, past 19.
89, okay, so it's been functioning for 20 years next year. Are you going to do a, I mean, it would be really a good thing to do a, kind of an expo, but really a presentation, like a Cape Cod Commission Day, where you really do invite the public to an auditorium, to a place where you can discuss what the Cape Cod Commission, where it has been, and where it is now. I mean, really kind of overlook, you know, oversee what, you know, and have old footage and, you know, that sort of thing, and then bring people to where you are, and I'm not sure how you could do it, but it would be a great opportunity for people to understand the evolution. to understand the evolution and what the, what the purpose of the Commission is. Because no one really does understand it, other than you say no. So, and that's what they think.
Anybody that's ever gone to any of our meetings.
That's exactly right. But that's their impression, and that's what the impression that's out, you know, for those that are against, a few, I think, and their numbers are even fewer, who are adversaries, get that, you know, they have louder voices always, and so people's impressions are colored. I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out, but have you thought about how you're going to?
We're in the beginning stages of thinking about how we're going to do this. What I feel is important is I think the Commission should have an annual meeting, if there is open to the public. You know, and I don't think that we do that now. I think we probably should do more of that. So the question is, how do we sort of structure that? There is a good.
We have that, we actually have a, we actually have a, you know, when you publish your annual report, it always seemed to me that in the private sector, when the annual report is published, that's when you have your annual stockholder meeting. So if you tied the two things together, I think that, you know, everybody would go away with something.
Right.
And you'd be able to go over, you know, lessons learned and what you're going to do next year.
Yeah, I think it's an appropriate time to revisit where we're at. I mean, Elizabeth and I have had discussions, and strategic plans, good ones can last for 20 years. But, you know, we are facing very difficult and different challenges over the next 20 years compared to the last one. And we have to make sure that we, our core mission is consistent with those next challenges, with the few, with the next 20 years. And so I think there is no more appropriate time than this spring, I think, to revisit that very perfectly.
I can see the combination of intelligent design and evolution, all mixing together to show where we're, you know, where we're going.
I hope so.
I'm going to suggest we bring this back on October 28th, which is three weeks from today, and it's the day after the SENS meeting.
Oh, good, okay.
So that might be a good time to.
Yes.
Do you think? Not overwhelming, two days together.
Elizabeth, thank you for all your work.
And you'll give us a copy of the CD, the CD, right?
It's saved on the laptop here, and then I can also bring over some extra CDs.
Right, bring it over, okay, terrific. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew is next to speak with us, and Paul, if you have a few minutes maybe to stay or come back in about 10 minutes. We're going to talk first about the results of the Review Committee. And then there was a couple of other things I just wanted to touch on about our approach.
Is Andrew up now?
Yeah, Andrew is up now.
Is Stan tackle me?
How long, we did that?
It's been you, you were there for an hour.
Never took a breath, either.
Yeah. Elizabeth, do you need help with stuff going back over there? Are you okay?
I think I'm okay. I got it first time. And that's, oh, all that Mark's got.
Is it the 26th?
27.
Is that a Wednesday? Oh, Tuesday, it's a Tuesday. Thanks.